It's Argen.
Argen.
Argeni?
Argen.
You can tell I don't pay that bill. But to have them come down and actually look at all of those, because you would never, on my little eight people, I would never want to be a fire. And we have people that come in the winter, they leave in the winter, come in the summer, they turn their waters on by themselves, they turn it off by themselves, I wouldn't want anything to happen with the electric. Just a thought.
But I'm, I'm not sure, so you want us to do what, what are you asking?
I want them to make sure we have that cap on our.
A cap?
Yeah, that's what caused the fire of that one house that exploded.
Okay, we didn't have a cap on some kind of.
They think it's a major.
So if you take the meter off, it violated the rules, right?
Yeah, right.
To take the meter.
So they need to disconnect at the pole if you're gonna take a meter off a house, so if he did that, that's illegal.
Exactly, and they think the guy did that in his house exploded. It, but it was the meter that went over the gas line, the metal meter that he took out, not the new meter that he put out. So wherever those old ones are. Just a thought.
Yeah, we'll have to figure that out, okay?
Okay.
You all snap me?
I am.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll jump on the electric car. How much is the electric car charger's gonna cost this town?
Zero.
Not gonna cost us anything, and we're gonna make revenue obviously, are we gonna change those other ones to pay as well?
Well, I would imagine, I would imagine we would do that, we haven't gotten.
Because you see cars that park there, and they park it overnight, they stay there.
Yep.
Anymore, uh, but the, you know, that's not fair to certain people, and you need to make them where it's electric car parking open as well. Because when we do it, I don't want an electric car, and I'm not having that, you know, you see trucks and cars and all sorts.
It can be sprayed painted on them, yeah.
It's just an inconvenience for people that are trying to charge, and the only time I took your car to charge, it was somebody there that wasn't, shouldn't have been there.
If you have a ball game or something and parking's at a premium, it does, there is an ordinance that you can put up that says, no parking as long as everybody has parking basically.
Oh, so unreal car parking during an event would exceed the E V?
Yes. You would have to make signage for it and stuff, it, we'll see what happens when we get this.
And I would put E V chargers farther away than normal parking, so don't make them like, maybe your parking, make them the, the farthest parking, because listen, if you're gonna charge your car, then.
You have to put them wherever there's electrical, so we don't have to.
Uh, second thing is, I saw there's a thing on the short term rentals tonight, um, is there a revised copy I can get of that?
Here. This one?
Yeah, okay, five two eight Big Street.
I just wanna say I saw my first motorcycle at the E V charge station today, I saw.
Wasn't mine.
And, and the motorcycle was parked this way, yeah, I know, I, I was like.
It was an electric motorcycle?
Yeah, there's a Harley, or electric Harley around here somewhere.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
I don't know.
Interesting.
Be too quiet, yes.
If you haven't heard, if you've ever ridden one, it's, it's kinda weird, because you don't hear any, you don't hear anything from the outside at all. And you're gonna respect me.
Any other comments? Yeah, how about on, on, yeah, on Zoom, any comments from Zoom?
Raheen, um, they're all.
They're all muted, they're all muted. Or is it, is it wish again button, is there?
No, they can unmute, they're able to unmute.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay. Did you say they're on mute, Kev?
They can unmute if they want to.
If they want to.
Yeah, alright.
Okay, sir. Uh, we're seeing there before five Bay Street. I wanted to put a plug in for the ambulance. It's not a money maker, I know, neither is fire department, but we would consider getting one of the fire department. Our community, the population has fallen. We've got one. One of the, since it's not used, we are increasing, so is the average age. Going from the one at fifty nine point one. Putting on the planning board.
Now, what's the average age?
Fifty nine point one, twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty, okay.
Three of the last applications that came to us were people who wanted to improve their property so that when they retire, they can move it, which I think's fabulous, but it just goes to the point, we're not getting enough. That's where the drop in our population was, was people with kids, lots of it. Sure, we can wait until the county gets here, but. You know, you got a heart attack, you don't wanna wait fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes. So that's my point. Please, make sure it gets done, alright, my other.
Alright, uh, whole business, chapter one fifty one S T R short term.
I have a question on what he just said, is there a motion to get rid of our?
No, 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 not in any way, what's about.
It's starting to scare me.
No.
No. It's not, it's in the budget.
Make sure it stays.
Yeah, sir, that is not, it wasn't even a question, it was a question of whether we were gonna add a second person and spend that extra money for the summer time.
But there hasn't been a clarity.
That discussion, you know, paying more.
Okay, got it. I mean, that's a plus for our little.
Yeah.
And, and like Tracy says, everybody is really aware of this, so.
Whether we can afford a second, adding it on.
What, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, why does it cost us anything, don't you bill the insurance companies and insurance companies?
The amount, the, the amount we get back from Medicaid, it's like we talked the other night, if we turn a bill in, it's a six hundred dollar bill, or our, our billing company does, we might get back, because the maximum Medicaid, Medicaid gives is one price, but we might get back two hundred and fifty of that, and i- if you chase after it by the time you're done, you don't gain anything, um, and that's, that's the biggest problem right now, Matt.
So how's like Wayne County building these multimillion dollar facilities?
And you know what?
And how, you know, how much rent do you, is, is, how much rent do Silver Waters pay the town to have a building, is there a separate town building, is it like, do you get government funding, is there, like, because I knew somebody that did ambulance services down in Jersey, and they made a fortune.
Yeah, well, here, I mean, I can tell you.
A lot of money.
Can I tell them what the proposed budget is for that?
For the extra kit?
No.
I don't wanna get off subject, I'm just.
No, what is that budget for the ambulance?
Well.
It's just proposed.
Yeah.
The proposed budget for our ambulance here in the point is a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, okay? Um, and Tracy can give you even closer wise, money wise, of what we actually took in, well, up to this point, we talked about this the other night, just to, to get.
In the budget session.
In the budget session, yeah, um, and we've had a couple of years in the past where we've done okay, and I mean, it was kinda break even maybe, but that was because Sodas Town Ambulance wasn't here, and we were running for Sodas Town Ambulance, I can, I'm pretty sure that's what's causing it. You know, and that's, that's where we stand right now, I mean, the, the, the other part of it, uh, putting somebody on for a couple, three months during the summer, um, we pick up a better value, but there's other things to it than that, so.
Did we lose money last year?
So right, the, the, during, so right now, i- it's always been, we, we were always hopeful that.
Break even.
You break even, end of story, break even, and right now, wh- when we were looking at the budget, we have, our expenses are seventy three thousand, our revenue was fifty eight, and then that doesn't even consider the ambulance, the brand new ambulance that we have, which is a twenty two thousand dollar note. So right now, we're minus fifteen, my, you know, we're, we're at a deficit of, so that was, that was the conversation that we were having during our budget session, and then, so to add on another employee, you know, and that, and that was just, is it feasible, you know, I mean.
Dig a deeper hole.
It's, you know, how much of a deficit do we want, that, you know, what, what allowance could we make to?
But Mister Mayor.
To.
One of the things that we don't know is, you know all the facts, we know nothing, nothing has been said to us in any newsletters to Sodas Point Village residents to pay these wonderful taxes, I mean, evil will.
Well, what, we, you mean about the, the budget, is that?
No, not the budget, about, you know, the, you know, just state what's going on with the ambulance.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we have a new ambulance, we have a note for it, like, we have our sewer note on our water taxes, it'll be there for another, somebody years, but, I mean, we don't know that.
With new ambulance.
The information is out there, and the, I mean, that's, that's, that stuff is.
And if they bought it, they would have voted on it at a prior meeting, so it would have been part of that.
We don't know all the details, you tell me where that information came to us.
So tonight, they're gonna decide whether the budget looks good to move forward, what we've agreed upon, and as soon as they set up to do, next month, April is when we, that's when we have our, our budget, um, hearing, the budget hearing, which we do every year.
And then you're gonna ask questions about.
Every year in April, and so you can see, then this will be available for everyone to see from today until April seventeenth, right?
But I think exclusively, the budget is a big thing, people, a lot of people, unless you go item by item by item, how many people come to your budget meeting?
Uh, we had nobody come to.
There you go, I'm saying.
Usually, oh, I'm sorry, Bruce was there.
You don't count.
When we. Maxine, I was, Maxine used to come. Newsletter, we have all these agencies that are, um.
So you, are you just saying that you want him to do like a, like what day?
I'm not, yeah, I'm saying that, you know, like, we get a newsletter from the garden club, we get a newsletter from, um.
I mean, we, uh, we can't put that information out until we can put it out, like I.
Oh, I agree with you.
We're doing a budget session, and, you know, like, we were doing the budget sessions, that's what we've been working on.
I agree.
So.
I don't wanna go item by item on the budget, I'm just saying, when we have something that needs to be addressed.
Mm-hmm, okay.
You know, I get my S O S letter, I read it thoroughly, it was wonderful, I get my newsletter from our other organization.
So, are you asking about the ambulance, or everything?
Just the ambulance.
Just the ambulance, okay, I, I just, I was just wanting to make.
I mean, I can write a check.
No, I understand.
So I have a question, so I know every month they say, you know, thirteen calls, but only seven were billable, and we discussed this before, so if you appear to the scene and provide treatment or service, but they don't actually get transported anywhere, do you bill them, or do you don't bill them, or have you looked into potentially billing?
Yeah, we have, we have, um, and you tried it here in the point, and there's, there's several different things that have to be done when you do that, that's a checkup. Um, you've got.
Your, your packet is. You gotta go this way though, this way. I mean, I can go get it for you.
Um, the, the, one of the, one of the issues, what like Matt was talking about with, uh, what we call public assist, is like somebody that falls out of bed, we go put them back in bed. Um, somebody that may be in a car accident, and they don't wanna go to the hospital, uh, what we do is, in order to even try to bill, we have to take three sets of vitals, we have, we have a list of stuff that we have to do in order to have the billing company check, but the fee that you get is about fifty to seventy five dollars from that, whereas, you know, in, in, we do it sometimes, uh, car accidents, we do it most often because the car accident, the insurance companies pick up either, either car, but they pick up the payment for that, so, you know, um, what no fault.
I'm just saying I was unaware that we're in trouble.
We're not really in trouble, it's just.
Well, it's, I mean.
Breaking even is not.
Breaking even has been what we have been doing, but it's.
Better than under.
But right now.
Most definitely.
That this year, it's, it's enough where it, it makes sense to recognize that before we, uh, sign off on the war.
So, so, good or bad, losing money a little bit is probably a good thing, because that means there's less people getting in the ambulance. Wanna go very down to it, I mean.
Individual case by.
Right, so, or there's just less people in the ambulance, so there's less income, s- to some degree, I don't know whether we should vote for less or more.
Well, as someone who will, I have someone pretty close to you.
Yes.
That has been completely my neighbors, there is nothing like being able to call an ambulance and have it there in about three minutes.
Yes.
And if it's in, in, an accident site, it's even worse, or better, I mean, you know, it's, within five minutes, when Tom got hit in front of the house, it was, you were there in five minutes.
Well, I think it's a huge plus to have an ambulance.
The second person was so that we could have the more, I can't remember why you mean.
Well, first of all, take the thought of the ambulance going anyplace right out of your mind.
Yeah.
This is, what, what the discussion is, is like Tracy said, the discussion is whether we put somebody on from like the middle of June until the middle of September during our busy months, so that we have a full B L S unit on every day.
A second, a second person.
A second person, right, we have medic on anyways, but the second person would basically be the driver. Um, they're required to have C P R and first aid and that kinda stuff, but not like a, like an E N T would be, is to put them on, when we have, if we have a single person on, and we have to have the county come in and pair up with us, so we have two people on our ambulance, they charge us a hundred dollars, you know, which, it used to be one seventy five, I believe, and they dropped it because there was some other agencies in the county that it was, it was killing, because they were doing four and five hundred calls, so, that's what the, one of the things it does, it picks at, plus, if we have a full crew, the county will use us more for mutual aid in this area than if we only have a half a crew, because if they have, like I said, we have a half a crew, then we've gotta have one of the county guys ride with us, Matt, go ahead.
But if the county's using you, that means you're not in Sodas Point, you're outside somewhere in the county, which then, your thirty second reply or whatever, it ain't gonna happen, if you're out in, if you're out in Newark, or you're out in Wolkett, or you're somewhere else, now you're further away, you're not directly here, so that's not really to me an advantage, and advantage is, if you're not being used by the county and you're being used by Sodas Point more, then you're here.
Well, and then.
You're right here, and that's what we want, that's, I think what everybody wants is somebody that's, and that's what the advantage of having you here is, you're here.
Right.
And if you put on another guy, and the county starts using you, and you're doing these calls outside of this, of this area, well, then, that takes you away from us, and why are we paying for it then if it's taking you away from us, and that's not fair to us?
No.
So that's, that's my angle on that.
I understand, but what it does is, is if we, if, we can have a guy sit over there, two people sit over there and do nothing, you know, for several days, or we can get called, with a call, like right now, our old, our old C O N, certificate of need, was the village of Sodas Point Boundaries, and then approximately a mile outside of that was what we called the mutual aid area for the town of Sodas, we did, we do that for the town of Sodas, when the county took over, we sat down with them because they were taking over the whole Sodas area, when we sat down with them, we've set it up, so we get to go up Lake Road a little bit further, um, up to about Dufflow Road, back down to Middle Road, down Middle Road, across, uh, um.
Grass? Grab road?
No, it's, it's back this way, but anyways, back across fourteen and down as far as Alasha Farms, and then we have, and that's, the other stuff in there has always been our, our coverage, um. Yes, we are signed up with the county, so if there's a mass casualty someplace, then we go take care of that, but that's our, pretty much our general bound, boundary about where we go, the only time we head out like that is if we had to go to R G H or Strong or something like that with an A L S run, um. But that's, during the summertime, that's, uh, uh, there's a, a graph here, what showing some idea of, of calls in that, but those three months, the luck extensively, I mean, you know, just because.
Well, it rains, it pours, right, so you're probably gonna hang out on another call, and you need a call, and you're probably either get a lot of something or nothing for a long time.
Yeah.
But the other thing is, when you get a call that's outside of this area, is it profitable?
Well, yes.
Because we're paying for the fuel, right, Sodas Point pays for the fuel.
Yeah.
So your fuel to go an extra thirty miles is several gallons, right?
Yeah.
And does that get reimbursed back to the town, and then, that, does, does, or, or are we just spending our money to go somewhere else? You know what I mean? Or is it higher profit?
Not necessarily profitable, and that's, I mean, that's.
But aren't we?
Okay, that, that's what I wanna see, I, that's, that's the only thing I wanna know, I mean, I, as a business standpoint, what is it, does it make sense to do that and then go further away? Are we gonna actually make more money doing that, because again, we don't wanna spend our taxes and then have you go somewhere else, and then it's not giving us anything out of it. You know, I mean, I, I, again, if, God forbid, something happens to somebody, yes, they need to be helped or whatever, I understand that, but sending your vehicles far away is taking away from us, and like I said, when it rains and pours, you're not gonna get the call right here, you're gonna be out somewhere, and that's, and, and that's how it always happens, you know, I mean, this shows.
This is public record, right? People are not making money, you know.
Yeah, so, so. Go out there, stay here, you know, let somebody else.
Yeah, so.
Send a bunch of their traffic.
So just to give you an understanding, this is public record, I'll give it to you, but, but the maximum callouts, total callouts, we have is like thirty two a month.
Okay.
Right?
That's, that's in the busy months.
That's in July.
And that's in July, in one month.
Yeah.
One month.
Right, so we, we average somewhere around fourteen or fifteen calls a month.
Mm-hmm.
All calls, but we only bill maximum in July, it looks like sixteen calls, that's all we can bill.
Uh.
So every, the rest of the months, it's like five.
Yeah.
Seven, so there isn't gonna be revenue, because we don't bill.
No, which is fine, I, I don't mind losing money, just, because we have the ambulance here, that's what, that's what we're saying, I think it's great to have the ambulance here.
Yeah, so just. So, so, so the point is, is that, right now, we're, we have great service, you know, and that guy, we don't have very many problems.
Well, yeah, I don't worry about the service going down.
Or we do have.
Well, one thing, one thing that I heard, like, we drive all the way to some faraway land, right? And it's a non-billable job.
So Bill just said.
Well, yeah.
Why would I?
Alright, guys.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay, you're okay.
I can talk to you privately, you know.
It's a viable, it's a viable question, there's no doubt about it.
I mean, unless it's an, uh, something we're gonna make money on, there's no such a scenario, yeah.
Oh, I.
So, hold on, hold on, hold on.
You make that decision after that.
You have to.
Well, I understand, but we're talking, you know.
But, but from my understanding, it, the only time that the ambulance goes to like Rochester is to take somebody to a hospital.
Right.
Yeah, we don't.
We don't go call to Ontario unless there's a mass casualty event, we don't leave our little area.
So Bill just, he gave you the borders, Middle Road, Dufflow Road, Alasha Farms, you know, which.
Down here.
Yeah, so the only time they leave is like, I got an ambulance, right, when I wounded myself pretty good, but for the most part, they stay around here.
A billable.
Yeah.
Alright, it's billable.
I think we all send the billable people out, it's like, we all have insurance to pay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the other.
Yeah, and they probably have to ask them if they have insurance first, I was.
They keep trying.
In this service area, you don't usually. Alright, um, in any case, it's gonna be coming up the budget, I'm sure, you know, um, and we'll, we'll just go from there, uh, let's keep moving here, so that.
Sorry, I've given everything else to you.
One fifty one, is that where we're at?
Yes. There weren't many changes, we tried to address where we got. The biggest pushback from our insurance. We didn't have. So, and the only request is that all applicants, individuals must provide evidence of property insurance, including a certificate inside of the insurance, and if you didn't, please be sure that it's a short term. How much anyone, but also you go to them, hopefully. Uh, we, we all know that apartments have a premium in the community. The standards. For me, that, uh, is, the double we say, is one parking spot for.
Wait, wait, say that again. Say that again, louder. Are we saying one spot for home?
Bedroom. That's the standard, that's not what he's saying, but that's the standard, one spot for bedrooms.
I have, it has, um, its rules.
That's what, that's what most other municipalities seem to do, is what he's saying.
Yeah.
But, but he's not done, he's still got more to say.
Okay.
We don't have a problem, uh, and we know that a lot of the properties are on small lots. We don't have a problem with people parking on their lawns. Many of our own residents park on their lawns, I, I don't see where the difference is, whether they're actually turning parks on their lawn, or, 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 places where it's parks on his lawn. We also realize that in some cases, go to the two hands general on the Great Street, there's no place on the property, the apartment, historically, they provide on public parking, so we've proposed this, where the required number of parking spaces, the number of parking spaces for overnight guests cannot be left in the. Liberals, inclusion of park, public parking spaces may be allowed at the discretion of the C E O. Uh, definitely, it's reasonable. Uh, you know, it's really, all on A Street, you're saying, we're usually self-public partners, probably not, not too realistic. Okay, uh, the other one we got pushed back on was occupancy. Two people per bedroom was a support and a keating memo of nineteen ninety one, uh, keating was the General Council of High, housing, or, and urban development, and it was adopted by us in nineteen ninety eight. Uh, our formula follows this guideline, we divided it to two adults and one child under the age of twelve plus two, because a lot of the fellows have a high awareness of, uh, or something that uh, I found out four or five minutes before the meeting started, that Kevin has a problem with that, which Kevin told me today when I talked to him. We, we're not on that. Uh, and if we take that out, it still leaves you with a one bedroom of place being allowed to house for people. I think it's reasonable, uh. If you don't think it's reasonable, then tell us what you do think, and we'll put it down. But, you know, we, we don't make up our numbers, we, we try and go with what the standard is in the other municipalities, not just here on Sodas. We I picked up the plus one from, uh, one of those. We didn't think what, and those aren't reasonable, so that's what they are, you think it will, and we'll. Did you have any questions about the discipline? We have to answer, we'll try to. Yep.
Maybe, you gotta make an adjustment there with that one that Kevin brought up, or?
Well, I, we can strike that plus one child twelve years old, younger. It's still, uh.
So I'm gonna ask, because I've done a lot of Airbnb's, and there's a lot of Airbnb's that have two bunk beds in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
So they're, they sleep four, right?
And I've, they're massive facilities.
And what I'm saying is, if you didn't like what.
Yeah, I'm just asking, I'm not arguing at all, I'm just asking.
I'm just saying.
Okay.
These, uh, this proposal isn't, okay, that's factory, tell us, tell us what you want, instead of, you know, well, take. Instead of, you know, well, take it back and think the other standard matter.
Yeah, okay.
Me, you're in touch.
So can I ask a question, so process wise, this is still discussion based?
Yes.
Um, this is out now public and see this new one? Yet, or is that gonna go out soon?
So today we would have, we would approve this draft and then it goes.
Well.
For public.
Yeah, I know, you would say, yeah, essentially you guys uh, have proven for in the draft, but it's subject to a public hearing. Cause any local law of progress is a public hearing, so then you schedule a public hearing at a future meeting.
Or a different time.
Yeah, or a different time, it doesn't have to be at a meeting.
So so I did notice hundred twenty days on here?
That's after it's sent to the state.
Right, so we we wanna skip this summer though and, cause that would be all sorts of excitement, so. Yeah.
If you uh, said, let's go with it today. Thirty days, public comment, then. Another meeting to say, okay. We adopt it, then another hundred twenty days minimum.
Oh.
So it gets you to the fall.
Yeah, so they, so basically what we're all, I think, worried about is making. If they have to make changes, they have time to make them.
Yes.
Yeah.
And and also it probably shouldn't start until January first, because all your stuff is set and all your money. When you set up the reservation, information is set up on Airbnb ahead of time.
Does that?
For the year.
Does every town have one of these?
No, it's a law that's, towns are starting to pass.
We we need the changes by like, probably August, September maybe? Because then you could change them on your software and then that way, when you start taking bookings. It'll already be changed instead of, cause I get bookings months ahead of time, so. This way, you know, this way people can see it.
You know.
But it does give us a good amount of time.
Well, I I get that. As far as me setting it, then my, I have no idea that would go take to get through here.
Mm hmm.
And then rewriting.
True. Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So are we doing something tonight, or are we just discussing this time?
I think the planning, he wants, he's had a plan where he wants to give you feedback on if you guys want changes.
If if you don't like it, tell us, if you do like it, then you can move on with it.
So. Not knowing what Kevin wanted to do, do we wanna wait and do it?
Kevin was on there.
He's gone.
No, Kevin just, his only concern, as far as I know, is he wanted uh.
Occupancy.
Yeah, that's a page. Yeah, so the uh, double side of first, the one bedroom to the block. Yeah, section one fifty one dash four order, section four. The part where it says plus one.
Gentlemen, please.
The part where it says plus one child, twelve years of age or younger, he has a deadline each target.
Right.
That was his only change.
Don't touch anything more, you. Good, gentlemen.
We could have a handicapped child older than twelve that needs to be in that room.
I'm here if you need me to answer it too, I can tell you why.
You go, yeah, please.
Yeah, so that makes that law less restrictive than the state and you have to ask permission for it. Because the state code is seventy for the first person and fifty for each person after it. So we'd have to ask. From the state to go less restrictive.
So, we're explaining that to me in layman's terms.
Uh, uh, long process that you're probably not gonna get approval for.
Okay, so we would need to make that, take that, that uh, line out, that paragraph or whatever out to make, to meet the.
So. So Kevin, are you saying that we can't?
State.
No matter what, you can't have three people in a bedroom?
That's not what it's saying, seventy and then fifty for each person after it. So if your bedroom is big enough, you can have more people, but that's what the state requires for a bedroom.
Oh, so it's size based, not square footage, okay.
Birth footed, yeah.
Okay, so let's craft it with square feet instead.
That's what it says right now, it just has a caveat in there for children, which the state does.
Section and make it a decision of the CEO.
Based on the maximum square footage per the law.
Yeah, there's already a law there, so why change it?
No, I agree.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, Kevin, do you hear that? Hello?
Say it again.
They're gonna, they're gonna strike what we've got in there now and let you make the decision as far as square footage, based on square footage, like the state has.
Okay, that's fine, cause then it'll change with the uniform code, so if the uniform code changes, it'll change.
So what are we gonna say as far as language on the maximum occupancy shall be determined upon permit application or review of the square feet? Of the bedrooms of the, of the place or something, by the CEO? Then do these people realize then he's gonna have to come in and walk around the house and stuff?
Well, he did ours when we got started, so, but it was cause we were building it, I think, um.
Plus it gives him a chance to see smoke alarms and that kind of stuff, if there's a inspection.
You need to go to CEO anyway, so.
Yeah.
We gotta know it.
Alright.
Kevin, does that work for you?
Whatever you guys wanna put in there, I just need it to be the same as the state code. So we'll probably develop a system that'll either be walking it or getting a floor plan, so if they have like blueprints on file, then we can use the blueprints, we'll figure out a system for it.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
So we go to the next round, next one?
So so basically, we would say we're gonna follow the state law, right, the maximum.
So next round, so so.
Do we need to.
And then vote next week or next month?
That's what I.
Or do we just agree?
Uh, you can just approve it subject to that change.
Okay, I think we do that, yeah.
Yeah, I hope they do that.
And the other.
And then we get full public comment. Um, the only, I mean, as good or bad, it's April, so there's still people that aren't here, but. If you're paying attention, do we want it till May?
Yeah.
Okay, that's that's I agree, yeah.
Next month is budget, can we just leave it to?
Yeah.
Budget, then we'll switch it to May.
Okay, yeah, cause there'll be a lot of discussion about budget.
So Bruce, you guys revise that section, you understand what they mean, what they mean about it.
Yeah, that's our problem.
And then I actually do.
Kevin will work on the wording.
Okay.
And then we'll do a public hearing in May.
I do, do we wanna do something separate, like a different day, or do we wanna do it before a board meeting, what do you think?
Well, you'll open it up. For thirty days now, right?
Yeah.
For the public hearing? I've never heard that, to be honest, no, just you can open it and close as long as it's noticed correctly.
Okay.
In my experience, unless there's something in your local rules that.
Well, I almost said we should do the separate, just have a meeting just for this. And then let the public, cause then we don't have to talk about anything else, right?
Correct.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah.
And then, cause there will be people that are gonna wanna talk about it.
I think so.
That's okay, I'll get up first and uh, bring us the ambulance.
Yeah. Hijack the home meeting, confuse everybody. Hey, hey, Matt?
Thanks.
I don't know, he started it, he started it, I just jumped on to it. Okay.
We're just gonna postpone until May, right?
Yeah, we're gonna, maybe we approve it next, when he's got the wording right, it sounds like we approve it next, at the budget meeting, we just approve it. Don't have any comma, is that true? Or do we approve it now with the change of comma, but then have the May meeting?
That's what.
Okay, okay, cool.
Now it gets sixty days, but you've been a teacher.
Right, so now do we have to make a motion to approve it?
Can you tell me, are we still on one vehicle per house, or?
No, one per house.
Alright, so what if?
It's per bedroom based on.
Oh.
Based on availability of the yard, the parking, whatever.
Okay.
And then also, if it makes sense.
For square.
Public parking that's close that is reasonable.
Okay.
And that's up to Kevin to look at it and say, no, that's insanity, or, yeah, it's cool.
That's, that's reasonable.
Yeah, reasonable is what we're trying to be.
And once this is, once that change is made, then I can, anybody can toss it, we can put it out on the website, so that people can view it. So, from now until, so, okay, so we're gonna do something separate from the meeting. So May meeting is the fifteenth, the earliest it can be. So.
Will most of your winter people come back? Middle to end of May.
It's also the end of the year, and actually, no, we're gonna do the, but the May meeting is the twenty second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, cause I'm not around with that, yeah, that's what I said.
But that's also the, the end of the year, um.
I'm planning to be traveling on the twenty second, just FYI.
So, do we try and do it at the beginning of May, or do we?
I vote no on that.
Let's just.
Maybe the June.
One of the, one of the.
I mean, you want the rest of the people in the town.
Yeah, and I feel that like on Tuesday or Wednesday of that week, just for that one hour meeting, basically.
Uh, of the, of the board week?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, it's a busy time.
Sure.
They'll be here before.
That's the, that's the end of budget time and then, and trying to get things buttoned up. Get shit for uh, cherry, that ain't gonna work.
Can we do it in June? Cause it's not.
June, yeah, it's not gonna go anywhere.
It's a lecture anyway, so why?
So, yeah, you wanna do it first or second week in June?
Or the?
I mean, or you could just, I don't know, if we wanna do it by itself.
Do that the night?
Whatever, if you do one year. After we get into this year.
Yeah, that's fine.
This is the.
And Mr. Mayor, one of the comments that from our people is you guys. Before, people voted on things before the winter people came back.
Six thirty.
And we would like to alleviate that.
Well, that's why we're doing it in June, yeah.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Yeah.
And then that way, everybody has time to.
We could have this, this June meeting at six thirty.
June meeting at six thirty?
No, we have to at least give an hour ahead of time or whatever. We gotta give a half hour. We can do it here.
June at six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Well, six o'clock, okay.
Do that, we're gonna sign up for that.
Okay, June nineteenth at six.
We're all gonna be on the scene, you know, that's.
Do it. Hit it over. Hit my photo.
June nineteenth, six o'clock.
Okay.
And sort of the regular board meeting.
Juneteenth, doesn't matter.
Oh.
Is that Juneteenth? Was that Juneteenth?
Well, that's why it's red, that's why I opened it, I didn't see anybody.
That ain't nothing, Matt, this year, actually, this year, we had to change our, yeah, so we're, I. Now I have to look at our schedule because we have, yes, you're right.
It's a day off.
That's a day off.
The fall holiday, New York.
So, did you, I don't hate it, I didn't.
You guys get a date? I got a home lead, man.
I'm gonna have to pull the meeting. Cause we have different days, this is gonna be the twenty second, and then June. And then June what?
Can we do the?
I mean, to be fair, you.
Can we do the?
Well, we 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 know we're gonna do it in June, so let's just, we can do that next meeting.
Yes.
Yes, so, perfect.
Move on.
Okay, now that we get that to that, let's move on to our next section. Um, in old business, the second part is uh, our nineteen ninety two fire truck, the Fenton Fire Listening. Um, Tracy's been handling that, so.
So this is just, this was another option that we found, I wasn't sure if we wanted to try and list it under here. The only thing is, we started looking at, because the Auction International, what is great, because. They list it for us, they do all the work, but then whoever the the highest bid is, they're the ones who pay the fee. But this Fenton Fire, it looks like there's would be a little bit more of a fee for us. But also, if we could get them to list it under this Fenton Fire. And they were able to get a higher, you know, get some, get somebody with a higher, um, you know, higher bid. Then it would offset the amount that we would have to to give up. So I, it was just, it's just an option, I didn't know whether we wanted to try, try it or not, or.
There's a place on January two that, in the packet of the paperwork that I gave, um, David initially, and I think I should have that written here. And they're the ones that quoted what the value of the truck was for me, so there's a local place too, but what this was.
What, do they take a fee or something?
I have to give the whole of them, I'm sure they do, probably a percentage.
If it was, you know, cause I think that it was a percentage and I.
You thought that thing was gonna be like thirty five, right, for thirty?
They said thirty to forty is what they, when they closed the price on it, the problem is, is that the, the, um, Auctions International, they have a general. Group, however.
It's not just fire, it's not just fire.
Right, these guys work with fire departments like down in Pennsylvania, I mean, any of these sales places will have places that. That, that's what they specialize in. Um, and I truthfully, I think that's a good idea, I think.
So I mean, as long as everyone's okay and we're just gonna keep trying to, it's gonna keep trying.
You put a reserve, or?
Yes, we will.
And they only, and they only charge you obviously if you sell it.
Correct.
So, yeah, I mean, no run, no.
So, yeah, so we know what it's gonna cost us by our reserve alone. Right, I'll make, I'll make.
Okay, so we'll.
I'm wanting to leave and then we'll go to.
Keith, there was no counter for that. So I'll just don't, it's keep you updated.
It was like eight grand, right?
On that. Yeah, yeah.
Um, under new business, uh, the village was, was requested, we've had one for quite some time, was the help officer. Um, Becky Wadsworth was the help officer in the village here for, for quite a while when she retired. Um, then it went to basically the village board, was made the help officers. Um, I have asked our medical director from the ambulance, Cynthia Martinez. She's got a girl that's getting ready to go into college and she's got a younger girl and she just doesn't wanna take that on, she's working four different hospitals. So, we have a village of Sosa Point, a doctor that's here, she's a doctor of radiology. Um, she's on one of the boards here now already, and that's uh, Janine. Possibly, not actually, no.
Fogarty.
Fogarty, Janine Fogarty down on the loop, Janine has offered to do it. Um, she's, we've got all the applications filled out, um, and I sent an email to the state today to find out how I get it signed on the bottom. And then Janine would take it over. The job is, is pretty much a, um, a, a title more than anything, unless you get like the pandemic. Or you get something major that goes on, then they're brought in to make some decisions as far as. How many days people should be out, you know, that kind of thing. Um, and she's, she's very eager, I gave it to her uh, at our ambulance meeting and. She gave it right back to me when it all filled out, so, uh, I'd like the board. Or, I'd like to make, have somebody make a motion that we put Janine in as the help officer.
Is that a paid position then, or?
Um, it can be.
So we, we, it was two, it's two hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Oh, yeah.
You're kidding?
I believe.
Yeah, we literally take that surgeon.
It's good to be.
That's what it was before. And we haven't, we haven't.
You can, the, the state says they have no, no bearing on what you charge, you can charge a dime. You have to charge something. You can charge pennies, or you can charge a lot of money, and like Tracy says, you know.
I mean.
And I would dare, and not, knowing Janine, it probably will just come back to us, but in any case, we oughta, you know.
Do we have to, we don't include the money in this, we don't have to, because.
I'm trying to think, I think Janine is one that.
Is it in the budget?
I think she's the volunteer anyway.
Yes, yes, cause it is, it is a position that the village already has, it's just it's being done by the trustees and we're trying to. Contune that a little bit.
I hope that we appoint Janine Fogarty.
Second, all in favor?
As a, as a public health.
Okay.
Until we get the measles here at Sosa Point.
I am.
Well, it's good.
Not worried.
Chicken pox.
Well, okay, so.
Contrashers report.
That is going to. Um, and so. Uh, it is claims three one through three thirty six, from sixty nine thousand seven forty forty eight. General thirty five thousand four six three four oh eight. Water nineteen thousand nine seventy two seventy two. And wastewater fourteen thousand three oh three sixty eight. We will pay the bills.
Second, all in favor?
Yes.
Bye.
Okay.
And then, so then. But.
Whatever.
So.
Right there.
Can you see firework?
Oh, yeah, yes, it's on magazine. No, it's over the other side of the.
Um, we, we went over the budget, we, so, the. The, I don't know if you guys have a chance to look at the bottom line for the, for general. I didn't make any changes at all for water or sewer, um, they stayed exactly the same from our, our budget question. And then I didn't, I did make a couple changes, I went through, I cleaned up, um. I talked with Sharon, made sure I know exactly what, um, what grants we have. And I, the one I had overstated, cause we're, we're pretty close, that the only one that we're really. That we really have is that the, um, fire department one, the, the hundred and sixty, the one fifty one. So I made sure that was there, I kinda went through, I'm, I, um. I'm hoping that I don't, didn't miss anything, I think I have all the debt service in there. Um, made the couple changes, made the changes to, um, the tourism. And I, I did bump up streetlights, I bumped that up by five thousand, just because I'm. I was got a little, little nervous about.
Reloading drugs? Anytime you fix the streetlights, anybody on that?
We're gonna work on that, hopefully, um, I've got. Uh, if you can, let's go to the back, that, it was seventy, it was a little, I, I, it's now sixty two thousand. Using other than balance, um, I think it was seventy, seventy, like. Seventy nine, yeah, something like that, so, I'm, I'm. Definitely okay with the sixty two thousand if everybody else is, is.
Oh, wait, no, that's, that's, hold on. Yeah, you're right, I see, right here, sixty.
Waste water, well, it's a very bad, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So do we have to approve?
No, no, just. Yeah, yeah, give it the. If we're good with moving forward for next month for the budget hearing, then.
So then we post this, so that.
And then, just so you type, if you find this, this is the one little, um, I've been doing this. Yeah, I've been doing this for a few years now, and it actually is, I think a lot of people enjoy, like, they, like this one.
Yeah.
Cause it's just a, a quick little summary, it shows where, you know, our expenditures, where we get our revenue. Our tax amount, and that, this is, um, putting in the, the six hundred and sixteen thousand. And, and then our, um, tax rate will be before ninety seven. It stays under five, you know, stays under the five percent like we talked about, and it's hopefully everything we need.
Okay, are we all set then?
So, good, um, so are we gonna do six, should we do six, um, um. The seventeenth of April, do you wanna do six o'clock, or six fifteen? What do we think?
Me, I, I usually don't tell the budget here. Just make sure the legal budget's set.
It has nothing to do with law.
It's numbers, lawyers don't like numbers. Except it's valuable life for me.
We need to go to executive session, so.
Did you guys have free planes?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Okay, sorry.
I already did.
So we all vote, so, okay, so we're going to executive session, so.
Alright, I have a question now, can I see, am I allowed to see the budget?
It's gonna be posted.
I know, but it's never detailed enough, I'm just saying they. But I mean, is this the one that gets?
This is, that's the summary, and then this is all the deeper.
The one that we get, right?
Well, this one's ea, this one's easier for everybody.
Okay, so it's good, I'm gonna give her mine.
No.
Oh, she'll see.
They're online. I know, would you?
Okay.
Is it okay if, um, can I be invited to executive session for at least the one portion?
Yeah.
Is that okay? Okay, I'm gonna end the recording and.
Figure it out.
Casey can kick you off, have a good night.